Hey, we are now live on Facebook and we are live on Zoom.
All right, well, welcome one and all. It's 6:03 PM and that means it's the time for the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee for Wednesday, June 26th, 2024. I'll start with calling the meeting order, which I just did order, everyone. And now we'll do a roll call. We have a new member, Ms. Hannah, present?
Present.
Present. Mr. Carr is not going to make it.
Well, he'll be here.
He'll be here late. So Ms. Leskey?
Present.
Ms. Recollum?
Present.
Mr. Dial? Present. So we do have a quorum. We can proceed to proceed with business. Our first business will be the election. I'm electing to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, I wanted to note, this is a this is a regular meeting, but it's also a special meeting of the Cohasset School Committee because it's a meeting of ends and beginnings in a way. Beginnings, we have our new elected committee member, Ms. Tori Hannah. Welcome to the committee. Stepping up. And so that means we're beginning a new term of the Cohasset School Committee and one of our agenda items will be a reorganization of the various officerships, liaison positions, and so on. So that's a set of beginnings. And as far as ends, we obviously have the end of school, which we'll be talking about, and we have the end of the tenure of Dr. Sullivan, who are superintendent. And we have the beginning with Sarah Shannon, our new superintendent, who will be starting July 1. In any event, so this is this is definitely a bittersweet moment and but we're happy to happy to move forward. So with that, I'll check to see if there's any public comment.
There is none.
There's none. I do want to, and this might embarrass her, but I'm going to do it anyway. Our other end that we have is Principal Farrell has accepted a position somewhere else, and we'll be discussing our principal search process later in the meeting. But Ms. Farrell sent a note to me and Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Recollum earlier today that is for the committee and for the school. And I'd just like to take a moment to just read this into the record, just so people know the type of person Ms. Ms. Farrell is. So I'm just going to read this here. Dear Cohasset School Committee and community, I wanted to express my sincere gratitude for all the well wishes and kind words I have received over the last few weeks. I will absolutely miss the families and staff of the Cohasset community. Over the years, I've met some incredibly dedicated, caring, and outstanding people. During my time at Osgood Elementary, I've had the extreme pleasure to work with and decide some of the most incredible educators that I have met in my 34 years of education. During our time together, we have not only supported, cared for, and loved many students and families, but we've also come together as a family. In the eight years that I've spent in the Osgood, in Osgood, the Osgood team has cared for and lost three important members of our family. They will forever be in my heart. We have survived and grown due to the experiences we have weathered, COVID, family tragedies, and many illnesses. I cannot think of any situation where the entire Osgood staff did not step right up and give 100%. I leave you with a piece of my heart and a lot of gratitude for all you have done as a school committee. May you always remember it's who we are and what we do that makes a difference. Sending love, peace, kindness to you all. Lisa. So we will we will miss you, Ms. Farrell. You have definitely left a mark for us. So having no public comment, we did have an invitation to the state champion Cohasset Girls Lacrosse Team. I don't I don't know that they're they're here.
No, they were not able to make it. I felt we should acknowledge them because they're a tremendous team and Coach Fitzgerald and the team did a fantastic job. I just wanted to show a quick video of their victory. This is courtesy of the Patriot Ledger. Let me see here. Well, if I can get it going. Here we go. There we go. Bear with me. Technological. Oh, hold on a minute. It's sounding like a video without volume.
And that's Mr. Hannah, the other coach, who is Mrs. Hannah.
Yes, that's why I was I was looking over. Sorry. Just hold hold one second. Yeah, should be good. Should be good with sound. I don't know why. Well, we play.
Much happens every time we try to do this.
Yes. That's in Walpole, just a little switch. What I understand, they just gained momentum, momentum throughout the season, and there they are, the captain. Fantastic to see and congratulations to the Girls Lacrosse Team. They certainly did Cohasset proud. And to Coach Fitzgerald and to the whole team, very proud of them. And I think that's something they'll remember the rest of their lives. And most importantly, they were wonderful kids in school as well as outside of the school and on the field. So congratulations, job done to the girls.
Congratulations. And continuing in the in the in the manner of acknowledgements, we are acknowledging our dear and esteemed Superintendent Dr. Patrick Sullivan. And I'll just I'll just start and open the floor to the to the committee for any comments they might have. I don't have a letter designation.
No lacrosse poem?
No, 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 I have not done that, but I do want to say that.
Oh, you might.
I will be brief. But I do want to say just thanks, Dr. Sullivan. Your leadership in these in the schools has really left an indelible mark and has changed the trajectory of where our schools were going. And I think it's due to your leadership. We are where we are. We're seeing lots of improvements in various metrics throughout the throughout the whole evaluation process. I think the schools are running better. Your attention to the community is a gift and the community certainly will miss you as as you move on. So as I said, I'll be I'll be brief because I will actually kind of get emotional and I don't want to do that. So I'll pause and see if there's any other members of the committee who will
Thank you, Lance.
Acknowledge Dr. Sullivan.
I'm getting winked at, so that's great.
I was just going to give you the opportunity.
Thank you. I would love the opportunity. I feel like I I'm relatively new, no longer the new as school committee. So most of my experience with you was as a parent and I just reflecting on the fact that I would have an opportunity to speak tonight, I was thinking a little bit about you and your time here. And I think what came to mind was, one, such gratitude for you and for what you've done, but also in the face of coming into a district that was in turmoil when you arrived. As a parent, that was very unsettling. I had two little itty bitties just starting school. And then to take us through the pandemic and to survive that and to come out the other side stronger in 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 many ways. And the fact that you remained open, encouraging. It just has been a delight to have you lead our school and be a leader in the full sense of the term. But then I was also thinking about a career and for you, just being so happy for you that you are returning to Marshfield. It's sad for us, but for you to sort of see a full circle moment. There are not many people that get to do that. And at the same moment, you embrace Cohasset as your own while you were here. And and that too is such a such a gift and a parent in all that you did. So thank you for letting us be your pre-Marchfield, Marshfield. And for all the work that that you did. It's yeoman's work at all times and appreciate your efforts and good luck.
I appreciate it all of that. Thank you.
Mr. Carr, the record show that Mr. Carr's arrived.
Great timing.
Great timing.
Hey, everybody. I'm sorry I'm late. Did anybody else say anything nice about Pam?
I gave a 18-minute moving orator. No. If you have any comments that you'd want to throw in for the record or just?
Yeah, have a nice summer. But honestly, that I just I've gotten to know you very well. We're very sad that you were leaving. We're happy for your next adventure. It was very clear to me that you care deeply about this place and the people that work with you and the children. And you have left this district much better than you found it. And we are very, very thankful. So we wish you luck. We will come down and give you a hard time at your first meeting and public comments. Don't worry about that, but we wish you the best of luck and we will absolutely miss you around here. So thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you, Ted. Much appreciated.
Well, Ms. Hannah, you're our newest committee member, so you have this your own lap of thought in all 13 minutes, but I didn't want to give you the opportunity to say anything. I don't want you to feel left out.
I'll say it quickly. I haven't gotten to know you very well, but I have seen you at all of my kids' events and different things like that. I have a one middle schooler into it, Osgood, or sorry.
Hurley, Hurley Wells and.
And Duke. Yeah, Duke will get to know quickly. But congratulations on, you know, taking the next venture forward down at Marshfield. And we'll see you on the Girls Lacrosse field.
Absolutely.
But congrats and thank you for everything you did. We moved in in the midst of COVID and so I can only imagine. I've heard a lot of things from prior too. So the fact you've left it in a better place. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to recognize a special guest that we have in the audience. We have a pair of Kiris. Want to give you the opportunity if you want to say anything in this acknowledgement of Dr. Sullivan.
Me? I mean, I don't want to repeat anything that everyone already said, but Mr. Sullivan, you're like the most approachable guy I know, which is saying a lot because you're like the top, so. But I mean, sir, I being a part of your little advisory committee, your fan club, it's just, what's not to look? That's what we call the family. You just, you always, we always felt heard, you know?
Thank you.
We didn't feel it wasn't, the committee wasn't just like a prop to be like, hey, look what I'm doing. It really felt important and I really appreciate that.
That's great. Jack is a perfect example of an amazing Cohasset kid in every way. So great things ahead for you, Jack. Really glad to have him.
Despite perhaps questionable parenting.
No, not at all.
I would also like to say thank you to you.
Thank you.
You know, the things that you've done here, generation. And the staff that you put together. Like somebody we've all mentioned, COVID. When you got here, it was a storm, you know, and you sealed that ship, you know, you really did. And you made it a better place. And I love you for that. Thank you. And I wish all the best for you and your family. I know Marshfield's lucky. I know we're lucky too. You left it in a better place. We're in a good place. We've got a great committee. I feel so confident as a parent that you've left in such a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been an honor. Ms. Owen, I don't know if you want to say anything. Not going to be your boss for another three days.
I know.
Boss, baby? Where's the little sign? No, it's just been, I want to I want to thank you. It's been, you know, whatever we said. We're very, very sad as central office and leadership team, but we're very happy because it's full circle for him. So I mean, it's the perfect, perfect storm for him where he's going. So we're glad you're we're glad you're happy there. We're very sad you're leaving. And it's been an honor to be a part of your leadership team. You've built a great team and we've had, we've done a lot of great things in a short period of time. So you know, touche.
Thank you.
Good luck in Marshfield. Thank you for everything.
And a good friendship, those.
We have a good friendship.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Skollins?
I know. I hope I don't cry. I mean, together so.
That's why.
Okay, you just can't do a word a word for every letter of his name.
I did, but I did, but I had to do a little. I know. I was like, oh, I can't do that whole thing. But I do have Patrick, so I am going to do that because it's kind of what we do. Elementary plus it's just an individual thing. So anyway, so I will start with, so P is for persistent, keeping students at the core of all that we do. A is for aims high, so all students succeed. Resilient, R is for resilient through all the challenges that have occurred. Inclusive for I, to all ensure to ensuring that all feel valued and heard. C courageous, often making difficult decisions. And I couldn't decide on the word for K. So you're one of the kindest and most knowledgeable men I know. So so it's been an absolute pleasure. We have been together for so long. But our kids have been with each with each other and we, and I don't know if you know this, but we actually bought a house. He his, your mom may have still been living there because it was so long ago. We actually bought a house on the street he grew up on.
Yeah.
Like, it's just crazy. Yeah, and he's and.
Because he grew up on it? On the street, kind of. Completely random, but it's a nice standard.
I know. We were to meet in the house and I said, where I live. He's like, I grew up there. Yeah. So it's an absolute pleasure. It's been it's been a wild and amazing ride to have been your sidekick. And it's been an absolute joy. And I will miss you terribly, but I'm so excited that you are going to be in Marshfield because I know that's where you, there, you know, your your family and your life is. And I have two little grandsons who are going to benefit from it. So I guess, like, I've been really fortunate. It just keeps circling. It just, I'm never leaving. You're never going to shake me. So thank you for everything. And I know that our leadership team is so thankful for you. And it's just been amazing. So.
Well, it means a lot. And our friendship will obviously last. I'm not saying.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Everything I was able to do is because of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to skip Ms. Recollum and we'll just go on to our, no, kidding.
It's a good move. It's easier when about half an hour of your life.
Strategically.
Well, I would have made a bigger deal of it, but Dr. Sullivan, who I'm just going to refer to as Pat for the purpose of it's personal. Pat asked not to not to make too much of it to do about it. But you know, I feel, you know, I think very highly of you and I have a lot, a great deal of professional respect for you, Pat. And I I just think that, you know, when you have someone in a leadership position who is extremely passionate about what they do, but is also in that position for the right reasons, it always, 100% of the time, yields the right, you know, result, outstanding results. And and that's and that's what Cohasset, I think, I realized from having you in the superintendent's chair, you know, at the helm of our district. And I think that you you brought a burst of of energy and excitement and enthusiasm and ambition into the leadership suite. And I think you built an amazing leadership team around you. And I think that from that Cohasset saw a much needed culture shift to one that placed the interest of students at the forefront and focal point of the operations of the district. And I think that that is the number one thing that we benefited from as a community, from having named you a superintendent and having you serve in that position for five years. And that's an extraordinary feat. I mean, it's a big deal and it's not easy to do. And you can see that, you know, you have a student here saying that we felt heard. I feel like there's no greater commendation that you could hear as a superintendent than that, you know, that couldn't have played better, right? Jack saying, you know, we felt heard. And then that's that's what we want. That's what we're trying to encourage students to do, be heard and have some and take some agency to their, you know, their own domain and their community here. So you know, the other thing that I and Lance mentioned this, the other thing that I think sort of tied for first in terms of the major benefits of having you superintendent was the fact that you're a great communicator and we just did not have that coming from the, you know, the upper echelons of leadership in the district, the openness, the accessibility, the availability, the empathetic leadership, the open mindedness and the, you know, just just absolute expert communication to the community. It showed a sincerity that I think that the community needed coming out of that time Ms. Leskey made reference to. And so everything happens for a reason. And I think that, you know, COVID happened and we had you, and I think you were the right match for Cohasset at the time. And I will say that, you know, I was I was in Lance's seat at that time. And that was an amazing thought partnership. That was that was to this day, one of the more fulfilling, I don't know what you'd call it for me, paraprofessional experiences. That was that was really, it was very difficult.
Some big issues.
Trying, very, very, it was very impactful and it was very difficult for a lot of families. But, you know, decisions had to be made and they had to be made, you know, very purposefully and and in a very deliberate fashion. And we tried to do the best we can. And I think that, as Mr. Kiris mentioned, I think we we did, we did a pretty serviceable job with that. I don't think anyone maybe hit the nail on the head because that was completely, you know, unforeseen and unprecedented. But so thank you. I think that, you know, I think I certainly grew as a person working with you and our district, our school district, undoubtedly grew. And as Ms. Hannah just put it, we are in a better place than we were when you came in. And I think that's your job, you know, and you did that. And I think that you executed that with absolute grace. So thank you. And we have a little something for you, which isn't that little. It was, I thought it was, I thought it was littler than it is. But we're going to give this, it's very appropriate. Especially given, it's a Newfoundland dog, no. But it's especially appropriate giving the communities a comment.
Oh, that's awesome.
Here we go. Here we go.
That is really cool.
Hopefully you have a lot of wall space. Dr. Pat? All right, so.
That's amazing. That is so perfect.
That is wonderful.
That's great.
And I'm assuming those at home grabbing up some boat at the harbor.
Where it came from. I will say that if this inscription is too big for you, the first time around, they made it too small. So I asked them to do it again. So it's on the other side. It's smaller. If you like, it's smaller.
It's optional. Depends on how you're feeling.
Which, yeah, whichever your vision is going that day, but.
This is really touching. Thank you very much. That's that's wonderful.
Congratulations from all of us, yes.
Yes, I couldn't be couldn't be more proud to have been here. I'm just going to put this over here. I can talk as I hope. Well, I just want to say that really I've been honored, absolutely honored to be the superintendent here for the last five years. I've been here for seven years, seven years. As I reflect back, it's not a very long time really in one's career, but the amount of heavy issues that we tackled as a team over the seven years, I think it's in some ways unparalleled, certainly with COVID. And then when I started, Cohasset was in a in a place where there was a lack of trust in the community and we had to rebuild that. I'm very honored that we put and proud that we put as our first line of our strategic plan that we place students first. I believe that was at the core of what Cohasset was about when I got here. And I was very happy to emphasize that and project that through my time here. Very proud to, every day when I see students like Jack and see their achievements, that we have that as our first line because that's really what what everything should be about in any school district. And certainly that it shines through now with the increased student voice at Cohasset. So I thank you, Craig, for telling me, for noting that I like my, I pride myself on communication and engaging community. It's been a lovely community to engage with. And I've been lucky that I've had some amazing school committee members. I just want to state that their names because they've all helped me grow as a leader and they've done yeoman's service for Cohasset. So I'm with Gina Stinko, who was here when I was a assistant super, moving into a superintendent, Jen Madden, Katie Duggan, Lydia St. Ange, Barbara Steppen, Ellen Marr, who was the chair when I was hired and did a lot to support me personally. I want to say a big thank you to Ellen. Ashley Cleary, who is such, was such a great person to have during COVID. She really balanced us as a team and had a different perspective in a lot of situations to make the district stronger. And then moving into this wonderful team, Jen, and I appreciate you as an educator and a teacher and the perspective you always brought to us. Ted, your kindness and balance and class shines through and makes me proud to be part of it every time I'm here. Mr. Paul, you know, you're, I've already mentioned when when we were saying goodbye to you, just your urgency and your advocacy for making Cohasset a better place has really made a difference. And I feel very proud of that. And then I was very blessed to work with two amazing chairs, both very intelligent guys, driven, and held me accountable throughout the whole process. And it was really great thought partnering with both of you. Lance, it's been an absolute pleasure. And, you know, your process oriented mode sets very well for Cohasset. And I often try to say to my leadership team and think about the unintentional consequences of decisions. And Lance is geared that way. He constantly thinks about unattended consequences just by his nature, and that makes Cohasset a better place. And Craig, the the amount of thought partnering I did with you, I can't think of anyone in my career who I've thought partnered with except for Dr. Skollins. I'm serious, more deeply than I than I have with you. And in unbelievable circumstances, oh, and I felt like sometimes I felt like an epidemiologist. I felt like an HVAC specialist. I mean, there was, there were, there was one meeting when I was talking about things in HVAC and I looked at Leslie, I'm like, am I really talking about, you know, ionic bipolarization? What I was talking about? But I was doing my best to try to advocate for the community and for the staff. And, you know, the staff is amazing here at Cohasset. They care about kids and they genuinely work to give them the best education possible. And the leadership team that I had a hand in creating, I'm so proud of. They're 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 ready to move to the next chapter. And I think you hired a fabulous superintendent and Sarah will come in here and roll with this and move to the next chapter. And that's all you can ask. And if it weren't for a very unique situation for me and my family in Marshfield, you know, Cohasset would would be my place. But I think things happen for a reason. And I really think this next shift is going to bring Cohasset to an even more prominent place than it is right now. So it's been an absolute honor and pleasure. And thank you for acknowledging me. And I'm glad I I played a small part in people's lives and in the lives of the kids who went through here in the last seven years. I always look back fondly about it. And then I also, I should, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the central office team too. I mean, Sue, Sue's been amazing. I meant that with the friendship. We really, really like Sue and respect the work she does. Barbara's moving on to a new chapter. Obviously, Lisa's moving on her chapter. She's special too. But Barbara's moving on her new chapter and she offered a lot to me. And no one's offered more than Leslie has in terms of friendship. I've known Leslie for a long time. And I was really lucky to get a chance to work with you. The thought partnership was rich and the friendship was richer. So thank you, Leslie. So that's it. Thank you.
Well, congratulations.
The feeling is mutual, but that's enough of that. Onto Agenda Block D, school updates. We have Dr. Sullivan's last episode of school news.
Yes, bye, Colin.
Right here, these.
Yes, spare me one second. So I, just by way of.
Oh, I should have mentioned your technology skills are unmatched.
I do my best.
Did Sarah go through the training of setting that thing up? Not yet.
There is a formal training, actually, it's mostly.
Very frustrating.
Oh, I know. I know I do. Just want to point to the to the navigator, just some, just a few updates. Obviously, we put some end of school year reminders in this. For folks watching or may watch us on tape, if you have any question about when our schools are open during the summer, these are our typical hours for each school. Certainly call ahead if you want to. And there's a way, you know, get in touch with the principals to make sure that the school is open during this time. But typically, they're open during these times. And we do have a, unless the day changes or something changes, we have a an invite to all Cohasset school students, families, and staff to our welcome to the 2024-25 ice cream party, which is great, by the way. Those who go get free ice cream. And it's a really fun opportunity to meet, in this case, the new superintendent and team. And it's a nice family mixer. It's great. And then we'll get into the Osgood search later, but just a few things. I talked about the the great win from the from the lacrosse team. And the Boys Lacrosse also had a fabulous season. Losing in the, I think it was the round of eight. A very close match, very close game. And then just some goodbyes. Again, this is what it's all about, the shining faces. We we did have a nice goodbye to Ms. We did have a nice goodbye to Mrs. Farrell at Osgead where the students lined the, and staff lined the hallways and were able to go through and there she is. They love her. She's left such a legacy and we'll be very missed. And there she is. A lot of very genuinely happy kids to have been a part of her, or have, have had her as a part of their lives. And then a lot of happy kids leaving the buildings. So we got middle school, some of the, you know, the high fives, clap outs. They're also happy coming in too.
They are, they are.
Maybe not quite as happy, but they are. And a lot of hugs. And, you know, it's the moments like that when you really can see the community and you can see the genuine care that our students have for our staff and our staff have for our students, which at the core is the greatest asset of Cohasset Public Schools. It's the relationships between those educators who are right in front of the kids and the kids. So this was lovely. This is Dear Hill. And as you can see, some pretty happy dudes. Get to the bus. Had a lovely fifth grade send-off. I know a couple of committee members saw that. And a great kickball game.
Huge thanks to the parents that organized that fifth grade send-off, they did a great job.
Great job.
And it was a lot of work for them. I think there's, I know a few of them, Kathleen Burns, Nathan Romano and Megan Barry. And there were, there were a couple others too.
Suzie Roberts did the year.
Suzie Roberts, yes. And yeah, there are a few, but it was a lot of work and it was a really nice, really nice ceremony.
Yeah, it's lovely. And then wonderful eighth grade dance. Hooker comments. Which is great, become a nice tradition. Thank you to Hooker Comments for letting us use the facility. Eighth grade. And yeah, and then that goes, this goes into graduation. But that's really it for updates from the school. We're happy that it was successful into the year and ready for some rebooting and some fun sun and then come back and get to work. And the future's bright.
Well, thank you, Dr. Scollins. Do you have anything planned for the next four days of the last four days? Any major updates that would you expect the next four days of your tenure?
I hope not. Very, very quiet.
Normally we'll look forward, but it's very small, very low horizon, so.
Well, we have been, I have been transitioning with Superintendent Shannon. It's important to note that we've known each other for a while, so it's a very open and comfortable transition. And I think, you know, you're, like I said, you're going to be in a great spot with her, so good job.
All right, well, speaking of being in great spots, I think our next agenda item is about trying to be in a great spot with a replacement principal. So I think, Dr. Scollins, are you going to lead this discussion?
Want me to put it on the screen?
I have actually a different one.
You do?
I do. So the one you have was our original timeline, but I met with Superintendent Shannon and so we tweaked a little bit of the dates, so I thought I would take you through those.
Yeah, let me make you a toast.
I think I am.
Oh, you are?
There you go.
They're always together.
Public Cohasset Education Foundation Yeti?
There you go, okay. You see it looks a little different too. We advertised the position on June 14th and I can probably say we have at least 14 people have already applied. So that's really nice, very qualified candidates that are in, on our, in Schoolspring, which is really amazing. I think good news, bad news. There's so many layoffs that are happening across the area, but that could be really beneficial to us. But it's sad for all those people, but lots and lots of nice, really good candidates. So, oh, I think that type. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a typo, I apologize. So steering committee, that's for the.
Already done that?
We did, so sorry, I, this is what happens when you duplicate, right? And I can fix it right here, watch.
Literally watching the magic happen.
There we go. So establish that actually today, so hopefully that we'll finish that up. And then we will have our first meeting tomorrow and we will go through, same protocol, it works.
That is actually a really good thing because it shows you that our hiring processes are consistent, which is what you want.
Right.
You want a consistent process every time with the, with the dates being flexible. And the key is always we never settle.
Never. And that, I learned that a long, long time ago. You do it once, you never do it again. And so you always trust this process and you always trust the system. So, you know, our hope is that we will find the perfect candidate, but if we don't.
Keep going.
We just will.
And the intended just blow out.
Exactly, it doesn't, yes. So I'm not, I think, again, I do think it's going to be a really positive experience, but again, if it isn't, then we just keep going. But yes, the process is exactly the same. So we have followed this since Dr. Sullivan got here, we follow this process and it works. We've all commented on the great teams and all the people that have been put in place because of this. So we have our first meeting tomorrow morning and so I've already reached out to those that volunteered their time. We had some, we actually took all of the staff that volunteered, there were only five, but they had so many different roles, so I just took them all. We were only going to do four, but I just felt like it was valuable to have all. Yeah, it just, it was just really nice to see all the different people. And then we had several family members who volunteered, so I've reached out to those two people and they will also be there. And then today hopefully you'll decide on who you would like as a representative from the school because it's so important. And then tomorrow we will meet, we will meet again on Friday to go over all the candidates again and choose the ones that we want to interview. And then that process is going to take place on July 9th and July 10th. Our hope is to have six candidates and I think we probably will. Sarah and I have talked over and over and looked at everyone. And then if you scroll down, we will then do the finalist round on July 23rd in the morning. And then there'll be time for them to meet the family and staff. So those times will all be determined later when all of that happens. And then hopefully we will have a candidate to introduce to you after all of that done in early August, late July, and they'll be leadership and staff too. So same process we've always used. We'll just let the process play itself out. So any questions?
Who are the staff members elected and who are the parents?
Like a school committee.
I have so many things up here. Sometimes it goes from one to another or.
Nice and cool in here today. It is. It's nice for my last meeting. Always first, thanks to have a nice, it's not, it's always been this way, it's always been nice.
This is very climate.
You got going, right?
It's very consistent.
Paul finally got his AC.
The good news is when the kids are here, it's always on and beautiful. But when we're here, sometimes the timing isn't as good as it can be.
That wheel is awesome.
It's great. Big walls in your new office.
It might make me put a ram drive steering. That's really great.
All right, so here we go. So obviously Superintendent Shannon will be on there. I will be also on the committee from the cafeteria. We have Anne Marie. Yep, Marissa Doe. We have Dave Vinton as our adjustment counselor. We have Liz Dinich, reading specialist, and Leslie Dimony as kind of in the role of a teacher, but she is our library media specialist. And then Lisa Gallow, of course, as the administrative assistant. Alex Sanders-Sullivan will be the elementary principal and John Mills will be the secondary principal representing. And then the parents are Greg and I hope I say this correctly. Hello. And then Elizabeth.
Sounds great.
Those are, oh, yeah, so.
And there's a blank for, for school committee, so we'll come to that in a moment. Any other questions from the committee on the process? The only thing, I was very gratified to hear both your remarks that we're not going to settle. I think that, that's, that's the concern. It seems like an aggressive timetable, but at the same time, if we've already got 14 applicants, that bodes well for us being able to find someone. And with the broader kind of, you know, situations going on in a lot of schools with departures, it seems like we might have a good choice. So my only concern in the whole process is, is ending up with the wrong person because that's, that's something that's really impossible to undo and could do a lot of damage to what we're trying to achieve. So, and it looks like a great, a great committee. Just out of curiosity, without getting into the specifics, but of the 14 that you've seen so far, are there any that you're like, this is, this is definitely a person that could do the job? Do you have people that are already kind of, you know, like, okay?
People that are already in the position, that have already done it.
Well, no, I mean, just like if you're looking at resumes or just knowing people from, you're just like, yes, we've got, we've got some good candidates that we know would be able to do this job.
Yeah, I mean, there's some familiar names to both Sarah and I. So I think, yes, I think it all depends on what the committee itself is looking for and how, and how they present themselves. But I think we have very qualified people.
High quality, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, yes. So I think that's really strong and I was really happy to see that because sometimes people just apply and then there's, they don't even have certification required. But I didn't see, actually, I actually think everybody's certified, don't you? I think I was really, I was surprised because usually I'm like, Jack. And that wasn't the case. So I actually think all 14, I'm like, I couldn't commit exactly, but the majority of them all certified. Yes, either probably in a leadership role of some sort, whether it's an assistant principal or currently a principal or some other kind of department chair. So all, there were, there's a variety.
And the Osgead principal position is a really sought after position. I mean, I'll have to say, it's a beautiful school and a wonderful community. It's PK to two, which takes you out of sort of the NCAS administration realm, which is.
Beautiful, it's a, I mean, all ages are beautiful, but there's something just particularly special about those.
And you don't want something going forward for that reason, but it is, it's a focus on, on your love of kids.
Right, it's that early, it's early childhood, right? And so it's, it's a special, like I said, they're all special in their own right, right? Every developmental stage has what makes them special. But I think it's very unique because it's often that first experience that families are going to have in a school system.
And I'll just say, I think it's a really strong move for Cohasset to have a PK to two school. It's rare and it's developmentally right on the money. Kudos to Cohasset for holding that.
It's good.
Any other questions for the committee? So I think the ask is to nominate a, and maybe a committee member to serve on the search committee. So I'll just open that up to the forum, to the forum, see if there's a volunteer or discussion. Any thoughts?
Anybody interested?
My thoughts are that Jen just did the student services and she, I know she enjoys it, so I don't know. If she's willing to take it on right after you guys sort of finish your role in student services, it makes sense.
Collins and Shannon will have me. No one else wants it, I mean, I don't care.
I'd like to nominate my colleague for the.
Okay. If you were willing to serve, you, the role is yours. Great, thank you very much. I know you'll do a great job representing the interests of the community and the committee, so thank you.
It also makes sense to have an educator.
Yeah.
Yes.
Our only educator.
Awesome. And I know it is a burden on time, so thank you.
I'll see you tomorrow morning so I can read it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, that'll close off our Joseph Osgead school principal search. And now we'll go on to one of our standard growth agenda items, teaching and learning. We're at the end of the school year and so I need, I don't know if there's any initiatives to think of, but we always want to keep it open to keep our focus on the product.
Absolutely. Well, obviously, you know, bringing new people on board, so that is a focus. And Superintendent Shannon and I have met, so we've been in contact and really talking about this, that transition and what that will look like. And so over the summer, we have, you know, that reset for next year, but also looking at what happened last year and pulling that information together and looking at how that will impact what we do. I know that, you know, that we sent out for K through five the opportunity to practice some of their skills over the summer and we personally invited some people that we, when we looked at their scores, thought they could use a little extra time. So our reading and math specialists are on call for a four week period or five week period, July 8th through August 8th for those families in case, in case they need some help with the digital piece of iReady and answering questions or any of that kind of stuff. So something new we're trying and so hopefully parents will like it and kids will appreciate it and feel more confident when they come to school. There is something called summer slag, it does happen. It happens for everyone, yes. Exactly. So, but I, hopefully this will help them so they feel more confident when they come back into school. Because that's our, that was really kind of our reason for doing this was just, you know, and try and be flexible and not make it too heavy, but make it work in families' lives because we all want, we all want children to be moved to. So, so that's really exciting, so we'll see how that goes at the end. Keep an eye on those, the data for that. But really just kind of getting everything ready for the new year. And, you know, we aren't adding anything particularly new in the fall because we have so many initiatives going. We have professional development at the elementary level again to support our comprehensive literacy approach. We still have professional development at the middle school for math. So all of those pieces are built around so we can support our teachers to ensure that our kids are getting exactly what they need. I'm excited. It'll be a nice year.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins.
And it was exciting, no, Dr. Scollins just had to leave.
I do, I know.
I collected to tell you that at the beginning of the meeting, but.
I wanted to make sure I was here.
Sure she got through her academic phase.
A large gaggle of people.
By all means. Well, thank you for, thank you for coming.
Thank you, yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Pat, I could not have not been here, so.
Dr. Scollins, before you take off, thank you, thank you for leading the charge on the, on the candidate search for both student services and Osgead.
My pleasure.
It's a lot of work in addition to what you do and just where, you know, school committee will be obviously focused on onboarding, superintendent. It's really helpful to have you doing that. Obviously, you know, you've done it a great deal, so you have a lot of experience doing that, so. And Ms. Lesky, thank you for, as well. It's really helpful, so thank you, because it's the two critical roles, right?
Yes.
Simultaneously.
Yes.
In addition to the superintendent leaving, right? So it's a lot, so we're, we're, right, exactly. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of work, direct work with, you've worked with Barbara a lot, obviously. So, thank you. Just wanted to throw that out there. It's like, you know, above and beyond what you normally do, right? It's a process that doesn't usually happen, so thank you for doing it.
My absolute pleasure. Pat's been exciting. Yeah, you will, yeah, it's not over yet. Thank you so much, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins. And with that, we'll move into budget, resources and governance, budget finance with our Director of Finance and Operations, Miss Susan Owens. Two agenda items here, monthly update and a discussion on five to five user fees.
Give it power here. Or we all. You have the power. Do you have it to you?
I had it up.
I can, I can, I can show it if you need to.
Yeah, on my screen.
All right, Dr. Sullivan. Work the magic. Throw it, throw it up.
Please.
My pleasure. Monthly update, thank you.
There it is.
All its glory.
All its glory. This is the.
This is the FY twenty four May finance report and we're already at the end of June. So lots of things have changed. As you can see, through the end of May thirty first, what we've expended is about nineteen million six out of our twenty two million dollar budget, eighty seven percent. And we're ninety two percent throughout the year. So currently running on target, if we're covering our supplies and materials, there's a remaining balance about two point nine, which will, the last payroll will eat that right up, which it it did. It's a lump sum payroll. So there's quite a few, you know, quite a few people getting five or six checks all at once. But things are going, you know, as planned, little concerns in some areas. The spent tuitions shortfall has not changed. So we're still at the the minus four hundred thirty six thousand five eighteen. The town accountant transferred the spent stabilization money today. So that that hopefully helps with the deficit and the spend.
What was the, what was the transfer from the stabilization fund?
Two hundred thousand.
I'll I'll let you continue going, but one question will be what, where the balance two thirty six will come from?
Correct. This is just an update of each school, what their budget is, what they've expended, what they have encumbered and what their balances are throughout the year. Again, those numbers have changed significantly now that we've run our last payroll. And then if you could scroll down. Circuit breaker. So we have a circuit breaker funding. We expect it to receive one million thirty four one oh eight, which is a decrease of one hundred thirty six five oh one from from past year. We have basement rate is still seventy five percent. We applied for extraordinary relief to the circuit breaker program. We did not qualify. So that was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Loss to us and we thought we would, we would have to help balance our spend deficit. That didn't work out. We also applied for the reserve relief, which was to help offset the forty percent increase to private tuitions that we did qualify for, and we have received the hundred and forty one thousand fifteen dollars, which again.
Then you'd figure this by, that last year.
We, we had intentionally, yeah, originally thought we could carry it over, but because of deficit for this year, we're using it this year. So that again helps with the special education deficit tuitions. And this is just a past historical of what we've received in circuit breakers. So you clearly see the the amount of money has clearly gone way up from, you know, four hundred forty six thousand, the investment to over a million. Granted, this year is a little bit less than last year. And this is the the school special purpose stabilization fund, which was passed to provide, district was a one point five million dollar fund for important repairs and maintenance to the school buildings. They voted that at the town meeting. And here is the the capital list that they voted to put forward.
Very thankful for this, too.
We originally asked for about a hundred and fifty six thousand for the bus lease. They allotted us ninety thousand, so we've got to recap about sixty or seventy thousand in into our regular operating budget for next year. There's a seven thousand dollar charge, not charge there, allotment for the electric bus. It's it's twenty five thousand annually, but because we received the bus until late in the year, we have last year's twenty five thousand, so we won't need a partial. Replacement of the Chromebooks, which is a three year lease for fifty one thousand, which comes through the IT department with Mr. Menard. We have a technology plan where we're going to each school and replacing all the projectors. Last year, we did the middle school. And this year coming up, we're doing the high school. And then one of the elementaries will be on our on our ask for for next year. And then Ms. Sullivan, the principal of Deer Hill, has been replacing furniture by grade level, so that thirty five thousand helps with that. She's also asked for additional seventy five. I believe she asked for a hundred additional Chromebooks. They allotted us seventy five. Not sure why, took twenty five less. And then under the the capital stabilization fund, the two things that went forward were the fire alarm engineering study for the middle high school and to finish the retiring of the classroom at Deer Hill. So Deer Hill had spent two years retiring classrooms and hallways, and then we skipped a year, and this three hundred should hopefully finish that school. So that would be our capital for next year.
Yeah. And the the Chromebook number, it it basically is, it was a decision because what happens is tech provides enough Chromebooks for a particular class when needed, but they move Chromebooks back and forth. So in working through the tech, it was determined we needed seventy five more.
And that that eliminates, there was Chromebook sharing at the third grade level, right? That wasn't, so now we no longer have to share Chromebooks.
Yeah, because we were estimating on, I think it was, I think it was twenty five per class, but then when we actually look at the numbers of kids in the classes, less than twenty five, and that's why the seventy five came down to eliminate the share. It just wasn't, it it was a, it was a larger number because we were considering twenty five, but we don't have really any, or or we have one, we don't have many classes of twenty five in the elementary. So we did, we didn't need quite as many. And then we picked a sort of a a number for replacements. And back, after a back and forth, we determined seventy five.
Next is just an update of where our grants are at the moment. They have to be posted up by June thirty. So we have requested all of our hold on about funding. And you can see fund balances here on what's remaining. A good portion, this has already been balanced out to zero because they have to be spread by June thirtieth. So when you see the June report, you'll see lots of zeros here. And then the revolving accounts, the safe. So again, at one point, those balances were quite high. We brought them way down. And since the June report, sorry, since since the end of June reporting in the salary and payroll information, those numbers again have also been decreased quite a bit. Like you can see the school kindergarten, the two forty nine, that's been transferred because the town had the three hundred thousand put in a separate account for us. So that's the forty nine is no longer there. That's a zero balance there. And if you scroll down a little bit more, you can see.
So we will not be charging for kindergarten.
We are not charging for kindergarten. A school transportation is quite low, forty seven hundred, that was the end of May. Now it's probably down to a zero balance. Same with athletics revolving, that is probably down to zero at this point. And you can see that the school lunch program, that number has also come down quite a bit. Mr. Pardon has submitted quite a few purchase orders at the end of the end of the year with all kinds of equipment, over a hundred thousand dollars worth of new equipment for elementary schools and middle and high school based on suggestions that were made, signage, refrigeration, ovens, pizza ovens, you know, thoughts that he's got a conventional pizza oven that he he's considering offering pizza every day as like a a separate meal for someone that doesn't, doesn't want to eat what's offered for the day because they can make quite a few pizzas with a new oven and he can transport get people to the elementaries as well. So he's got some juicers coming in. He's doing some upgrades to that senior cafe, so he can actually do some cooking in it. So there's lots of things to come with food service.
Before we move off this list, do we, given that we're no longer charging for kindergarten, does it, do we still need to have a sub account for it? Is it, should it just roll into just the Osgead general revolving?
That that account will be closed. It's it it's closed now.
It's going to be a better account.
Yes, the revolving.
So that'll fall off this report?
That'll fall through the next year. It was just, I didn't have access to the three hundred thousand dollar account, so I was charging it off to the revolving until we made the transfer from the town side.
Got it. So that won't.
This is just an update, you know, to keep people apprised that how it's broken down by just the just the guidelines, you know, my head count by FTE and my my group in my central office, special education, how many psychologists, therapists, special ed, regular ed. Is anyone that wants to know how many, how many of each we have, they're all right there. And I have it, I think in several different, several different formats. You can just scroll right through. Those salaries based on regular, regular ed, special ed, undistributed, how it's broken down. Obviously, sixty percent of our budget is salary. And this is by school, the what is paid for by the budget and what is paid for by grants revolving. Exactly, that number hasn't changed in the last few months because we haven't added or removed any stuff. Here's our summary of utilities. Utilities is an area of concern for me. We did ask for an increase to our utilities in FY twenty five, but it was taken off the list just for a bunch of reasons and and revenue. So you can see.
It's left us in a little hole.
It has left us in a little hole. So you can see here as of the end of May. Can you scroll down a little bit?
Sure.
It's okay. I thought I saw the difference.
I'm gonna go.
It's four hundred seventy four thousand this year versus three fifty six last year. We still have the one to change though. So there is definitely.
Yep.
An increase in utilities. Same, I believe it's the same for the gas. Not quite as high, the electric was really much higher.
But you can see it is.
So this is our grants, these are our, I should say, these are our grants and how how many positions are funded by each. And the same with the revolving, rather than beneath it. Scroll down a little bit more. Here's our enrollment as a June first. And then but not below that is, I believe, the last twelve months of enrollment.
Those are good numbers, by the way. Looking to another district, I just want you to know.
What are those numbers in March, yeah?
They're they're higher. Yeah, and I mean, in some cases, they're the same, but they're, they tend to be leaning towards a higher. I mean, I'm sure some people like those even lower. I don't want that, I'm just trying to give you some comparison. I think it's pretty good. What happened here?
What happened?
They're all stretched out. I don't know what it is. What is this?
That's supposed to be the twelve months of enrollment, but it.
Oh, okay, I see, okay, okay.
And and that, I mean, that's.
It's like bingo.
And, you know, just just a couple of, you know, fireworks, like for food service. Again, I want to congratulate the new food food service director, Veniceo Cado, who's in the Cayman Islands right now, enjoying his vacation. Had a very, very great, successful first year and has great ideas moving forward. Transportation, we know the electric bus is here. We've been using it for our daily routes and what's there, I say, nowhere is a concern, but now it's in the shop.
What happened to it?
The door, the doors.
Oh, the door, the safety door was shut as well. I mean, we, this this happens with all buses. It's not unique to the electric bus, but.
Is it an electric door?
No, I didn't.
Yes, so.
Where'd it go for service back then? East Boston? Or East Providence?
So the school year is almost over. Obviously, now it is. Only concerns, you know, were our special education tuition and utility accounts. The utility accounts, you know, as you'll see in the next report, are definitely in the deficit. So we definitely have to look at that. And that's it, unless there's questions?
Questions from the committee?
I have two, that's okay.
Absolutely.
All right. My first question is, when it comes to the engineering study for the fire alarm and the refinishing, the retiring of the classrooms at Deer Hill, are those things that are going to happen this summer? Yes, so they're both scheduled to happen this summer.
So I know they they went out to bid.
Okay.
For the study. We only had one applicant, which was AI three. That's that's the last I heard from the town hall on that. I know they had to have some type of meeting to discuss, to negotiate terms and prices, that.
That's a feasibility study, right?
The the engineering study for the fire alarm. I'm sorry, I probably just said engineering study and they're about four hundred.
Yes, that is happening this summer as well.
I just feel like sometimes things don't happen in the summer, then it's hard to.
And Deer Hill, yes, that flooring is happening this summer. They're already gearing. We brought in some some custodians early to empty out those classrooms so that we can get working on that right away.
Fabulous. And then my other question is around the energy usage. Is this something that is, can be a cultural shift around how energy is used? And or is there the possibility to bid out for our supplier or is that town mandated? I'm just sort of wondering because it seems like there are some fluctuations in actual use, but I think also culturally having, just thinking about budgets in general. Like I opened up a backpack at the end of school year and took out a consumable notebook that was twenty percent used. We paid for a hundred percent of the book. And I, and that's not the first time this has happened. So I just, I guess I was just thinking when it comes to budget, whether or not there are areas of of sort of taking a mindset of frugality and how we might sort of, because that's a cultural shift.
Minimizing microwaves, fridges.
Oh, yeah, or just making sure that, you know, when we're on Feb break, that things that can be unplugged are unplugged for, you know, that teachers and staff all unplug everything before they leave for the summer because that is going to draw. I mean, this isn't budget life changing, but if we're in the, if we're in the situation where we're trying to work against a deficit at the moment, I think taking small bites where we can would also be helpful because the money is not going to just come through. And and, you know, if there's, you know, brainstorming those things and how we might help as a school committee enact some of that, if that's, if it's needed. I don't even know if it's needed or if you feel like it's needed.
It's needed.
Okay.
It's needed. The plan is hopefully over the summer, then being facilities to start and say, first of all, you know, do you have any ideas of the whys, other than cost?
Right, yeah.
We did all the lighting, we were supposed to have this huge savings. I'm not seeing the savings and that electricity, electricity.
Well, it does look like from twenty one to twenty two, just kilowatts, it's just gone down by twenty and ten percent. So we were one point two million in twenty one, one point one million in twenty two. We're up over twenty three, but still there, you you were seeing trending towards a more efficient use of electricity throughout all the buildings. It's good.
Right, so we are using less. So again, the contracts are done between the town and the the company.
Okay.
So we don't really play a part in that. And and obviously, they're probably, you know, trying to bid to the lowest, most expensive pricing. But pricing is up. But again, the same thing, like you mentioned. And in my opinion, in in facilities opinions, we have, I'll probably, I'll probably get frowned upon for this. We we have, we have teachers, we have teacher called lunchrooms or workstation rooms. We we should not have individual classrooms with refrigerators and microwaves. We just shouldn't have it. That draws a lot of electricity. And I know we had some classrooms, but now the other classrooms are emptied into the hall. You can see how many refrigerators and microwaves and things. So coffee makers, I mean, to classrooms, and that's.
That's on the list to look at, just to make sure.
That's on the list.
There was an effort a few years ago to minimize that, but I think it maybe crawled up a bit more.
Well, and just maybe finding out what, I mean, our faculty and staff, I mean, having been a teacher, there's nothing worse than not having a cup of coffee in the middle of the day.
We gotta fix it.
But like fixing it holistically rather than individually.
We want them happy, but we just gotta make sure there's not.
So, yeah, clean drinking water. I mean, I think all of those things are must haves for our staff.
What we can do to bridge up those numbers now.
Any questions, comments from others on the committee?
So as in in typical fashion, Ms. Luskey did ask something that I wanted to ask about utility, just getting to the whys. So we'll be looking forward to hearing what everyone has to say because even though Ms. Dial, as he points out, the usage is maybe trending in the right direction. The problem is that, you know, inflation is impacting us in the sense that it costs more. So if you look at the higher usage from twenty one, that higher usage actually costs less.
Yes.
So we're really, it's a dollar issue for us because that's a, looking at the the gas and electric, it's it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that. It's, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, you know, that we're spending more this year. And it should, it should be fairly, fairly uniform in terms of our, our needs. I mean, unless you're seeing some record cold winter or some, you know, that the days are a lot shorter for some reason than they are. Do you need more light? I, I don't know. I mean, it's just like, you know, uh, we need to figure that a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make a difference because that brings me to my next point, which is the extraordinary relief that we got, the hundred and forty-four. Is that going to the two thirty-six K deficit between the four thirty-six and the two hundred for Fed stabilization, leaving us with two thirty-six thousand to cover? Are we, is that extraordinary relief money, a hundred and forty thousand cutting into that two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar figure? So we got four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar deficit.
Yes.
For Fed.
We have two.
We got two hundred coming over from Fed stabilization. That cuts down to two thirty-six. Then we've got hundred and forty K coming from extraordinary relief.
Yes.
Is that gonna be applied, applied to the two thirty-six?
Yes.
That's great. So that's leaves with a hundred, but this utility thing could have paid for it and then we would have had actually fifty thousand dollars. But so, um, where are, so, so what's the plan for that, for that hundred thousand dollars? Yeah.
To make up, to make up for?
Yeah.
Um, yes. So once all the final, um, accounting is done, which is July, whatever the first Thursday in July would be, um, because we're still running, um, all our June bills. We'll have a better idea of what our actual bottom number is. Then we'll make transfers, you know, we can make transfers from revolving accounts over. Um, we can transfer, um, the money to grants for any of the grants that were, have unused balances. So for example, you know, um, Mr. Wong had today closed out a purchase order for consulting and it was a fifty-eight thousand dollars. So that freed up fifty-eight thousand dollars. So as the invoices come in through the rest of June, um, we'll know more by like the first week of July, what a bottom number really looks like.
Okay. Are we confirming that the grant money that we're transferring, it's within the scope that we're, we're legally allowed?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Apply that. Okay. And then revolving? Can be any revolving?
It has to have a connection. So for example, um, Mr. Coaden and I talked about, um, working on a plan maybe for next year that he could, pay for a portion of utilities, electric, because the kitchen does run off electric and gas. So, you know, it's, it's justifiable and legal to say, you know, even if it's ten thousand dollars comes out of the kitchen.
Okay.
Um, so we're looking at things like that.
All right. You're on it. That's good. All right. Thanks.
Welcome.
Appreciate it. So.
Actually, I'm, I'm gonna ask, that, that was the concern I had. Uh, I, I'll come at it slightly differently. Do we have, from a budgetary perspective, do we have the dollars in the bank to pay the liabilities we have coming due for FY twenty-four?
Yes. Well, I should say, we don't have it. It, it's, it's obviously gonna end in a deficit, um, as it sits until we make all kinds of transfers.
Right. Well, the transfers are all in the banks somewhere. So those are, those are dollars we have. If we're moving stuff around internally, that's fine.
No, we are not going to ask for any extra money.
Okay. So, so we have the resources to pay, including the, the specialized deficit and the utility increase.
Correct. Um, what's some of, what's some of the other districts have done? I should say some, I would say a good portion of the other districts because we're all kind of in the same, um, boat regarding specialized tuitions with that fourteen percent increase, which we're never gonna recover from. Many districts are, are dipping into their circuit breaker that instead of being a year ahead, um, they're using existing. Because we still have, we haven't done that.
That would be a bad, I would rather do, what, eight percent?
Well, yeah, but that's, that's, that's another topic. Okay, great. Um, a couple of other questions, looking at the, we saw the look at this, but since it's toward the end of the year, the, the school budget summary report. We have a, I'm just looking at some.
What do you want, Mr. Charles?
This is, it says page one, but it's school budget summary report.
Page one.
This is what we look at our fiscal year budget versus.
This is kind of high on the accounting system, yes.
Right. And I see that we've got, and some of these, if I'm reading it right, increases in, and maybe they're over, we, we have a fiscal year, like for example, athletics. We had a twenty-four budget of four hundred thousand. We have twenty-four expended of five hundred and eighty-six thousand. And then with cleaning contracts, we have budgeted sixty-two expended. We've got a lot of these that seem like we blew through our twenty-four budget. Regular at transportation, for example, because what happened with some of these, like transportation, how did that double over our twenty-four budget? And our athletics, where'd that, what was that extra hundred and eighty thousand dollars spent on?
Well, the athletics through May, um, Steve was still collecting funding, revenue, so not all revenue was accounted for for athletics.
But the expenses are still, regardless of what the revenue is, we've still got five hundred and eighty-six thousand expenses versus the budget of four hundred thousand.
Right. Correct. So once he collects all his revenue from athletic revolving, a transfer would be made to offset.
I'm just curious, the mismatch between the budget and the.
Because I think they count for the revenue, right?
Yes.
In the budget.
Well, your budget's just how much you're gonna spend.
Out of the budget.
You're also gonna collect some.
Yes.
So, well, let me just, and I don't want to belabor the point on our, on our last meeting here, but, um, so our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget was, was that we planned to spend four hundred thousand dollars on athletics? Because that's, that's what I think of when I see the, like the fiscal year budget.
Probably twice that.
Yeah, that's not right. That's how much we're, we know we're gonna need, or we think we're gonna need.
That's what we've budgeted from the school budget. And then a good portion of athletics comes out of revolving.
Oh, I see. So we, so the.
This is not taking from any of our revolving accounts.
Right. So the, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget is the, what comes out of the school budget. What is expended is what we actually spend total, but it's not part of the, the, the extra hundred and eighty-six doesn't account for.
At least in your usage.
Right. At least in my usage.
Well, that's, that's a great segue.
As you can see, if, looking at that report, our transportation, same thing.
Yep. No, that, that makes sense now.
Which are two of my, which are the two things that are on my next?
Well, I think it's, unless there's any other comments or questions with the committee, I think we'll move on to your next item.
Can I show that as well? Okay. If you can, I, I can assist. I'm not here for very long to assist. Wow, what's going on there?
Does that mean? Slide show.
From beginning.
There we go. Um, so we did talk about this at the May twenty-second meeting. It's, you know, my, my proposal for increasing fee, user fees. So for transportation. On a transportation, it just, you know, gives you just the general, you know, any student, um, not legally required to pay a court that chooses to ride the bus, um, pays a fee. Students who are eligible for inducement, pay the fee. You have a fee of about three hundred and fifty dollars. I should, it is three hundred and fifty dollars per student with a five nine cap. We have about four hundred and fifty students that paid a ride. Obviously, our school budget is in deficit and our revolving is in deficit for transportation revolving. You know, a lot of things came into account. If you remember back several years ago, we had shortage of bus drivers. So we doubled it. We've doubled up routes, um, which were causing, you know, stress and discomfort with families that had jobs and daycare and all kinds of things. About kids were getting home late. We had trouble getting drivers, so we had to increase the driver rate. We actually borrowed or rented two drivers and two buses from first student for a year, um, just because we couldn't find our own drivers. So we, you know, we decided as a group, as a subcommittee, um, and a school committee to increase the benefits for the school bus drivers. So they were making like twenty-five dollars an hour and it's gone up to thirty-two dollars an hour. Big jump. Wasn't counting on that big jump. Didn't increase the fees. Didn't increase the school budget by much. Um, we also have our parking lot lease, which comes into play with that as well. Nothing we can do. We don't, we don't have any other place to put our buses, um, right now. You know, I, I feel we have a really secure, permanent place that, you know, paved, provides lighting, um, use of bathroom facility, security. It's centralized. Um, and right now we don't have any other place to put them. So we're at, we're at the mercy of the local. My proposal is we need to raise the fees. Let's see. Next slide. So you can see here, it's a comparison. Um, our fees are on the high side, um, for this area already. You can see what some of the surrounding towns are paying and, and what their family caps are. So we're, we're at the higher side at three fifty. But other than getting an increase to our school budget, which obviously this year we could get any, anything within our role of a cost. We've got to come up with another way to fund, fund these, these things. Regular education, again, it talks about special education where required transport. So to go back to the first page, um, I'm talking about transportation. Sorry. So yes, the slide, the total accountability ship by school and how many routes, um, I am hearing from the director of transportation that going into next year, we have, we have at least one bus that fits that capacity.
One group. One group.
One group. So gives you an idea of how many students are riding. Bus can carry seven, seven passages, you know, for the elementary levels, for middle and high school, they can carry, um, fifty-two, just because it's three and a seat and the, the smaller students and two seats for the middle and high. So our current concerns, you know, our cost increases. So we've increased our drivers' salaries and their incentives. We have a new bus lease. Um, we've added the electric bus, which we are getting funding for.
We have a hot, we have a higher rate of the bus lease we have to spend from our operational budget.
Correct.
Than we had anticipated.
Right. We have monthly parking lot.
But that was the same as last year.
Was it the same as last year? Okay. I take that back. Apologize.
Hiring additional backup drivers. You know, wish list, this is, this is from transportation supervisor. Purchase an additional bus, an additional bus to be used for sports trips or field trips or add an additional route, um, to equal dispersed students on current routes and avoid overcrowding. Obviously, we don't have the funding to, to purchase another bus. We tried to, to put through capital for two, um, fifteen passionate fans to help with athletics, transportation, um, but that, that did not pass through capital either. So I'm kind of, got stuck at a point. And several times this year, we had field trips going out that we had to borrow a bus from Situate because we had a whole class field trip, which took us out to spare buses. And then we needed, um, a sports trip. So Situate pitched in and, and that does, that happens a lot among the districts. Situate, um, hang on, we'll, we'll either share buses or share drivers, um, back and forth, um, which, which is kind of a nice thing, kind of a gentleman's agreement type thing. So my, my ask for transportation would be, you know, to consider increasing the fee by something. Um, and I'm here to, you know, ask, look at me, what their thoughts are. I know. So, um, if we raise it to four hundred, so currently it's three fifty, if you pay after July one, it goes up to four hundred, you pay a fifty-dollar fee charge. The proposal, one proposal would be to go to four hundred. It will bring an additional twenty-two thousand five hundred revenue. If we went to four twenty-five, it'd bring us in thirty-three thousand. And if we went to four fifty, it'd bring in forty-five thousand. Because we're already the top list, uh, my proposal would suggest would be just to up it by fifty dollars. That's only gonna bring us in another twenty-two-five, but it's something that to start, um, because we're so high. Like, like I know, I know there's other districts, um, my former district charges five hundred and seventy dollars, um, not in this area.
And all this is of necessity because the budget's tighter, um, as we move forward, um, looking at contractual years too.
Contractual years, just, I mean, cost of everything goes up. Um, energy softer this year. We couldn't, we couldn't add anything to our budget. We could only cover just the roll of the cost. And even that was kind of a shell game in town. Trying to figure out how we're gonna cover it.
And, and we did comparatively to other districts surrounding us, we've fared well. But, but it, but it is gonna, it is gonna be. So these are.
I might just add, we did review this in, um, subcommittee, uh, before Paul left, we sort of gave all of this out. We came out to the consensus that I think the suggestion on the lower end of fees, if we were gonna consider it, made probably the most amount of sense and we could live with that. Should we needed to do that. We sort of thought about what some of the additional fees would be and what the numbers might look like. And while the revenue was good, we, we all leaned towards, um, the lower end.
Have we done like an analysis at the wrong time of year? Because in the fall and the spring, those buses are like, pretty, some of those routes are pretty empty. Right? And obviously in the winter months, it picks up and stuff, but I, I don't know if we can like, if it's even worth doing that sort of analysis.
It, it is. We do, we do often, uh, do dip stack and count that. I don't know what kind of an impact that would have on this decision. I mean, I know you mentioned that there's a one group that's at capacity.
So we still have, we, we have to plan based on the lowest.
Yeah.
So if we have four hundred and fifty students paid a ride, we have to make sure we have four hundred and fifty seats available, whether they're riding a bus or not.
You could, but I think the, the idea of you could shift some routes.
Yeah.
Based on the need. It just, it's, it, it's a, it's a good thought.
Right.
Um, I don't know how.
It is a good thought. I, I just, to keep things systematic, to, we would be changing, changing routes throughout the year. So.
It, it, it's, it's hard because sometimes the bus ownership can be very inconsistent based on the day.
Yeah.
Based on the weather.
Yeah.
Based on a lot of factors.
Right.
So, so it's, um, it's hard to be dependable with that.
Yeah.
But it's definitely worth looking at.
We could definitely look at it. I'm just thinking, you know, if in the winter, this last ride was on bus three, so now we, we.
Shifted. Yeah.
You know, is that, is that, you know, gonna be an immediate need to the families as well to say, okay, for December, March, I'm riding bus four, but then April, one, I'm riding bus.
Yeah, it gets confusing like that.
And it, I mean, it's a software, we put, you know, we plug in the students and it uses everything for us. And the most, you know, safest and quickest route. That makes sense.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
When teams use the school buses for athletics, is the cost of that covered by the athletic fees that students pay into, like, is the athletics department sort of contributing to the cost of transportation? Yes. And when students go on field trips, oft- oftentimes we have a little something we have to pay. Does that include transportation? Or is that only including entrance fees to say the museum of science? So if they're taking a bus into Boston as a grade, is that something that parents are paying for currently in terms of fees? And could they? Could that be a way to sort of, really so that it's sort of a, a fee bus on, based on usage? So that, you know, if your grade is going to the museum of science and you're being asked as a family to contribute thirteen dollars, you might have to contribute fifteen dollars, which will help to defray the bus courses as, in addition to the entry cost of the event.
Yeah, they don't right now.
I was gonna say, that's a great idea. I, I don't, I don't know when, when they have planning field trips, if they include that in the fee, but Dr. Sullivan says they don't, so.
Well, I don't think you could.
I think they, I think they do. I think like. I think they, I think they do. I think like it says like transportation. Yeah, when like you do it through the my school box.
The school check.
No, it's definitely something, just in terms of kind of thinking about like the, the people who are using the bus should pay for the bus in some ways and, but, but the buses aren't always being used by, in the way in which those parents who are paying for bus usage are intending, and there are other users that, that I don't have bus pass, but my kids clearly have taken school buses places. And so I'm not necessarily putting in.
And that's a great idea. I mean, if is correct, and they are paying a fee, it isn't being transferred over to the transportation.
Yes, it may be in certain senses what we have to.
Because we have a field trip.
Driver.
We have a field trips account, we have student activities, and I think that's.
But even fuel and driver expenses, those can be calculated.
There may be some times where we have to pay that extra money towards the driver, but I, I, I think generally transportation costs are included in the fees for the field trip. Usually it's the, whatever the intending fee is.
Yeah.
It's something we certainly.
Honestly.
I agree. I mean, every little bit can help. I do think that would be, you know, given the amount of field, I, I think it'd be probably fairly nominal.
Yeah.
But, you know, it helps.
But nominal for a family.
No, I'm saying.
Over the course of a school year.
Well, that's certainly. It's worth investigation first, because I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I, I swear it's a transportation.
But no, that's definitely something we can look into.
Because it like.
But the, there's two questions there. Is, does it, is, is that happening on every field trip we use? And then where is the money going?
Yeah.
Going to the, well, it's going somewhere to help the school, to help, to help student activities account, but should it go to the transportation?
And then in this proposal, are you still saying a five ninety family cap? Or?
Yes, I didn't suggest changing the family cap at all. That's the actual ridership. Because I know the, I know the three fifty compared to the surrounding, the high ride.
So when you did the revenue projections, did you account for? Because if, if all, all, if we change anything, the only people we're changing is one child.
Right. That's right.
The only people that were small, I would imagine a smaller, it's not, it's a subset of the whole.
Yeah, it's gonna make a difference. Toronto, it seems to me, having four kids myself, I can say that. Seems to me a lot of Quest families have multiple kids. And I wonder what the percentage of it is. They were actually.
Yeah, because objectively, the majority of families have.
Yeah, all this might be for nothing.
And we could absolutely know. But you're taking reason of the cap. I, I was just trying to keep it.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, before we can approve this, we need that number, because I don't, I don't want to make a change that only impacts certain, that may impact single child households, but not actually raise any real revenue.
Yeah, it may not make a huge difference.
Sure. Mr. Kohn. I also can see this being one of those things, even though it seems like a little minor, especially the athletic fees. I can see this being a thing where if we like, if we, I was gonna suggest that we, you sort of table this because we, we didn't roll this out the right, we, we need to make sure everyone's aware of the fact that we're talking about this.
We, we did.
It was on the agenda.
There were attendance delays with this. The, the first time we tried to do that, we tried to follow that. People weren't available, because we had a very small crew here. So we, we weren't able to, we wanted to get it done as quickly as possible, so that it would be going to place next fiscal year. Because you have to charge the fees over the summer. And we ran out of, we ran out of runway because of the attendance of the school committee.
That's okay. That's, that's, that's fine. Or turn next, we know what our next meeting is.
We will set that.
So we'll just take that, my, my point is like, so if I'm not on the committee, right? My kid, my kids go to school and then all of a sudden I'm learning that we're charging a hundred dollars more for the bus.
Right.
And we're jacking the athletic fees up. I'm gonna be like, like, why is that? I want to be, and look, we all know what happens, right? We, we've publicized this, we try and raise awareness about it, invite everyone and their family members to come and participate in some great debate, and then no one shows up. Anyway, but I just.
We had planned on doing that. We just, we couldn't have a robust conversation because there were.
I understand what you're saying. You just said that. I know.
Actually.
Yeah.
Dr. Sullivan actually put it in his newsletter as well.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a fee discussion.
For the presentation. So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying.
You're right. Just to reason.
Just telling people to know about.
That, and I think that's something we have to think about as we're considering the revenue. So we may have, we may table it. I think I'm personally in favor of tableing it, but we'll, we'll understand the consequences.
Great. I persuaded one person.
What would the communications plan be yet?
Don't say that.
Well, the other thing I, I, so there's a couple of facts that, that we don't have that I think would be helpful. One is that, you know, that they adjusted additional revenue. The other one, do we know how much it costs us to run, to per student to run the buses? Because I.
I'm sure, I don't know enough to pop my head, but I can certainly get it.
Because what I, what I'd like, what I, I mean, what I really want to do is I'm, I'm okay charging a fee to, you know, make sure that that fee reflects cost. That the costs are increasing or fees can increase. But right now, I mean, we're just kind of arbitrarily saying, okay, let's add fifty dollars, it's at seventy-five dollars, let's add a hundred dollars. And here's what the, the revenue is, but it's not tied to, you know, what the increase in expenses is. And so I don't know the cost side of the ledger well enough to look at the revenue side. What I do see is we are high. And I'm curious how other districts are able to maintain these, the vote. These much lower fees. And maybe we do need a bigger allocation in our general budget.
Absolutely, we do.
So maybe that's the.
I mean, we absolutely need an increase with all the increases we've made. The list of.
Where does the money come?
The concerns.
Yeah.
We've increased the driver salaries and incentives. We've got a new bus lease. We've got the monthly parking. We, you know, we've got to add new drivers.
And I'm, I'm looking at the department expenditure report that is provided from the monthly update. It looks like our transportation salaries were budgeted at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand and were expended at three hundred and sixty-one thousand. That's a, we have eight bus drivers. That's an additional hundred and, almost two hundred thousand dollars in salaries. At, that, that, was it that much of a raise?
It went from twenty-six dollars to thirty-two. We had six drivers. We have ten or twelve now.
We have, what, we have twelve dri, we only have eight buses.
We have ten, ten buses.
We have ten buses, eight routes.
Eight.
We have eight routes. We have twelve drivers?
Yes.
Do we need twelve drivers?
Yep.
We seem to need it.
We discussed this about having extra drivers.
But are we just paying the extra drivers when they're not driving?
So what's the deal?
They're pretty much, well, right now, the end of the year, they were pretty much, they were all, all driving. I mean, sports has been very, very busy needing, needing bus drivers. One of my drivers is driving. Sometimes they, they bus from Medco back and forth into Boston.
But isn't that one paid for by Medco?
Me, Mecca is paid for by Mecca. That's locomotion.
Yes.
So it sounds like.
Definitely dig deeper.
But it sounds like you need to get a little more information.
My, my, my only concern was we're ending this year, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in deficit in transportation and in athletics.
Yeah.
And the fees are already being requested. So right now the fee's three fifty, but after July one, it will go to four hundred anyways. So we do have time to talk about the transportation and then athletics, that would be for the fall.
Yeah, I mean, to, to Mr. Kohn's point, and it's, I don't think it's any fault of, of the, of us for planning.
I wasn't signing any blame.
I know you weren't. I know you weren't, I know you weren't, but it, but the fact is, as you mentioned, the fact is the fact that we, this is the robust discussion we needed. And now what we usually do is we
Go back.
Take that back, reflect on it, come back with information, and then decisions are made with that information. So this is, this is a good conversation. I, I just, I, I think they pointed a few, they've made a few points that I think we need to gather information on.
I agree.
What's the, what's, what's that? Good to say. What's the downside if we aren't approved of today?
The, the only downside would be I mean, there, there wouldn't be, I mean, the downside would be we would, we may bring in less revenue if we we change, if we're gonna change.
But only athletic fees, right? Because transportation's already, they're tall for and it's gonna shift the.
So transportation, right, but what, what the thought was, if we, if we raised it to four, four, four hundred.
Yeah.
After July one, the late fee of fifty dollars will kick in, so it would be four fifty for that person.
I see.
So we won't, the fee will stay at four hundred. That we just won't be incurring any late fee.
Mr. Kohn, do you have a?
Yeah, I mean, do we know how many people have signed up for the bus already? Because that went out in March or April, right? So like, I've already registered.
Yes, if you have the numbers, but you'd be surprised how many people come in.
And happen.
The day.
Okay, all right. I just wasn't sure. Like, so then am I going back and gonna have to pay more now?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Well, sometimes legitimately, sometimes transportation scenarios change.
Anyone who's already paid the transportation, I would not go back. This would be something you'll affect with July one.
So.
This on.
I just think then the numbers should reflect that. Like if we know it's four fifty here that are riding, paid riders. I think we, from a revenue standpoint, just understanding how much this year we would be the actual.
Jim and Dow, can you summarize maybe what we need to find?
Yes.
Okay, that would be helpful. And then everybody can add that, because I think that would be good for soon the team to, to, to know. So we could gather and then come back, provide that, and give you, you can make an informed decision.
What I, what I actually propose, we have a actual, and, and we probably overdue for this, but it's maybe someone else's decision. But have an agenda item on transportation, talking about the overall thing, including how much it costs, how many buses we have and drivers we have. Let's just get a full, because there was a meeting we had before where we were thinking about maybe getting a new bus and understanding the needs of the vans. I think during the capital budget, we processed, we pitched for new vans, but we weren't really able to, I think the reason it wasn't given is, is because we weren't really able to give that use case to, to the capital budget committee. So I think an, a deep dive in transportation, as far as the user fee increase, I think what I would need, and I'm interested in what other people in the committee would need, but a kind of what it costs per student. I'm also curious about that two hundred thousand dollar increase for, in salaries. Is that just the twenty-five to thirty-one? That doesn't feel like that math adds up, because it looks like it almost doubled. But twenty-three to, twenty-five to thirty-one isn't doubling. So just curious what the, the cost side of the ledger is and what the, what the cost drivers are.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone in the committee who feels like we should address this at this meeting?
I think the other area was on understanding the single family.
Yes.
Versus the, and then understanding how many people have actually signed up already.
Yes, that's good. That's a, that's a very important point. Because you don't want to make a big change and then you're only hitting a few people.
Then you might, we, we might want to, while we're computing the per rider cost, which is just taking our total dividing it by the riders, we may want to provide a comparison chart like you did with the other fees to show what the surrounding towns per, per rider costs are for transportation to show where we are in that.
I don't think we can find that per rider number.
Sure, you could just ask them for the exact same sheet. You know, not, you know, it doesn't have to be a plethora of, of districts. Maybe if you can get like the, you know, surrounding five districts or something like that.
What they charge?
Just, just say, what is, just to do exactly what we're gonna do, just say, what's your total transportation costs from FY twenty-four? And what's your total number of riders? And then
Yeah.
You can use that, those, those data points to calculate the per pure, or your per rider cost for each district. So we can compare it and see if it has a tie or if we're coming in low.
Okay.
And then I guess the other thing that I'd be interested in is there's, there's two other, there's always two other, there's always other basic finance issues. One, are there any options for cost savings? Where, where are there places where we could? Do we have too many drivers? Do we have too many routes? And I don't think the answer is no, but it's, you know, I need to be sure before we're adding a new revenue source, we've fully exhausted any potential cost savings. And then the other thing that would be helpful is, now left my mind. Oh, is there a way we can reallocate internally and create a larger forward-looking budget in our school budget as opposed to raising interest fees? So we have a, I don't know if there's things that we can move around internally, but obviously transportation is critical for getting kids to school. So if there's a way we can, if there's other things that we can do within the budget and the allocation that we have now, that'd be interesting to see.
Which though it's not coming from utilities or.
It's not coming from our special ed.
Special ed.
Yes, we can, we can look at all of that. The, the school budget is very, very thin. There, there is no fat to cut.
Oh, I know. I know, but, but budgeting is all trade-offs and we'll just, we'll just not have a music program for the buses. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, just for the record.
I mean, next budget season, we're gonna have to really advocate for a, a bigger increase to not just our rollover costs, but for our utilities, our, I mean, just cost of living is up.
This is, this is a budget's kind of pinch.
This is why you're leaving, isn't it?
No.
That Barbara said that twice. She was leaving.
No, I did not. But these are operational factors that are gonna be problematic.
We're heading into, you know, rougher waters.
But just to, you can telegraph where I am on this, is I just, I feel like before we raise expenses for our community, we really need to make sure we've explored all the other options. So that's kind of, does anybody in the committee feel differently?
No, I just have a question. Clarifying question. Four fifty, that's the number of paid riders, paying students?
Yes.
Okay, so there are other students. Are we using our paid students to try and subsidize the ridership that we are required to provide transportation for? Because I feel like this gets a little bit complicated based on population, population destiny, density, thinking about where people live and how many of those people are close to school and able to walk and not pay versus, I, I don't know, I think it gets a little bit, I think there's, there may be a, a more complicated reason as to why our prices or costs are higher. When we're looking at that. And not that we shouldn't find out those answers, but I'm just sort of thinking about taking a very small population of this whole, whole student body to take care of an issue for.
Well, that may be part of the general budget versus.
Right, yes, right.
Getting, getting an idea of what that allocation is.
Right.
And whether or not the general budget allocation is sufficient, probably isn't, especially given what we've had. I mean, this is all the inflation issue. We, drivers demanded more money. We had to pay them more money, so.
But I guess what, that's why the whole idea around getting a per rider cost, but that would be total ridership versus paid ridership.
Yeah, so I mean, but with that number, you can then slice it and say, okay, well, we've got fourteen hundred students, four fifty are, are so what's, that's a third, so maybe that a third should be covered by user fees. So, but you're actually right, you need to, you need to keep that, keep that in mind. So why don't we table this? And then I'd also, like, we can, we can talk quick, let's, let's do the same sort of discussion on the, unless there's other comments.
I was just gonna say that I think the athletic one might, they're maybe.
So let's, let's do the same sort of discussion on the athletic fees, like athletic fee proposal.
Okay. Do you want me to go through the rest of the athletic fee proposal?
Yes, please.
Okay. So again, here, here is the proposal. Currently we charge two, two seven, no, sorry, we charge two fifty. We have about two hundred and seventy participants. You can see the proposals here, based on here.
You're at the end of the show, so you gotta.
Yeah, go back.
Or just exit and start over.
But yeah, go to the top, you go to the, go deep.
Just look at it like this. Yeah, this is good. This is fine.
It's a slideshow, but it's not happening, so.
From current slide.
It's fine. This is great.
Yeah.
Here are the surround, surrounding towns, um. So we're, we're not at the, we're not at the highest, and regarding sports fees, um, as you can see, um, we're probably, um, right on, right in the middle of what everyone around us is charging. Some more, some more of us. And then the athletic concerns, um, you know, cost increases, so we have the fitness center lease. There's been an increase in game staff, meaning, um, contracted bus centers for transportation. And then, that was Dr. Thomas, which was, wants to have dedicated bands for, for his, for his, um, travel.
So, uh, on the fitness center equipment, my understanding was we improved that that was comfortably covered by existing fees.
Athletic reward.
Right, so, is it, that shouldn't be a concern?
It is, it is now. Not, not just, not because it's driven by the fitness center, it's driven by, um, the, the salaries for all the coaches, this is the highest, you know, that. They, they had a whole reorg of, um, the calculations, I'm not sure what the exact terminology is, but, um. Run Ford did a whole reorg of all the stipends for all the coaches, um, and put them in different categories and increases.
But we negotiated, and during the.
Yeah, it was definitely, it was negotiated, um, but that definitely, um, raised, um, the costs. And Steve, um, Retabi has said, you know, he's needed an increase in game staff, um, partly because we keep winning, the more we win, the more games we play. The more travel we do.
We need to stop winning.
So, so really, though, the cost increase, I understand, um, Chairman Dow's point, because we have made a point that the revolving account would be paying for the equipment lease. But what you're saying is these other factors have created, have actually created a scenario that the revolving account is not sufficient to do so.
Salaries, salaries don't go on the revolving.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to.
Yes, they do.
Salaries, salaries.
Our coaches, yes, our coaches, um, all our refs, our arms, all that kind of stuff. It's, that portion of it comes out of the school budget, and a portion comes out of, um, revolving.
I thi- I think what I, I, I need here, again, is, is similar to the transportation, is there, there's not a lot of information in the cost side of the ledger. So what is the deficit that we have, what are the drivers of that deficit, and what do we need to close that deficit?
Okay, I'll go, I'll go check the savings from transportation.
Yes, Miss Hannah.
Um, is this, uh, new to this, is it like, so if you play soccer and basketball, are you paying two fifty each sport? Or is it two fifty for the year for?
Each sport.
Okay, so every sport you sign up for, you get for it.
But they can't do it.
Okay. So if you have four kids and they're playing.
Yeah, you, you wouldn't pay more than the seven.
Seven fifty, okay. No.
Yeah, and that's, we, we do cross that issue, so. Need a cap.
But actually, I could put together the same.
Or you need additional five jobs.
Sorry, Jim.
Any, um, any of the comments, questions to the committee, because I think what we'll do is we'll.
Say thanks.
Yeah.
Put it on the next meeting.
No, that's good, because now we can gather the info, put together the information needed.
Absolutely.
And you can make an informed decision.
Great.
And we can advertise.
Mr. McCollum, do you feel like there needs to be some, um, outreach to the public around the discussion of this topic? To avoid the sort of, wait, nobody said this was coming.
Yes, I do.
And, and so what, what do you think that would look like?
Just to, just to, to, district, yeah, I, I, so, in my opinion, like.
I mean, I, I, I agree that like.
When we, when we are, are talking about something that might be viewed as impactful, and we know, like, kindergarten tuition has been a big deal in the past, and I know that's now a thing of the past, but. I feel like I just, from doing this for five years, I can just see folks getting. Upset about the fact that we're increasing fees without telling folks, and it, it'll really just, I think it's just a failure to manage expectations and a failure to communicate why we're doing something. Otherwise, it just looks like just arbitrarily increasing fees, so I think it would just be an email explaining that we're considering this because of increased costs, and, and, and. So we invite everyone to come participate in the discussion they'd like. And then what that does is, and we, we all know that, that's, it's rare that people will show up, although when athletics are involved, I've always said, when athletics are involved, you know, a lot of times people do show up. So there may be, and, and that's why I, I feel like there may be a heightened interest here, so that's, that's what I think, like, just to. I think for, for impactful things, the district emails are the most, I understand, you, you, you take a lot of time doing those super.
No, 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 I agree, yeah.
I think a lot of information can get lost in there sometimes.
Yeah.
Maybe people are, like, especially at the end of the year, I don't know how many people are looking at the news there, when you send a district email out, people are like, okay, and just, it's short and concise, and then it gets, at least it's like a direct communication about something in particular.
That's a good idea.
So from the.
Very wrong-winded answer to your question.
From the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just, I just want to make sure.
Or from us.
I, I agree with you, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, from us, actually, from us, just, the superintendent sends it.
Okay.
Because we don't have that district, yeah, for trying to school, yes.
And then it says onward and upward at the bottom. Okay, so more, more to come on this, thank you, um, for, uh, for putting this together, and, you know, we, we are facing difficult financial situations as a district, so we have to make some, some hard decisions. Some of those hard decisions might be increasing costs to our, to our community, but, um, I think we're, we're doing the right thing by, um, thinking about.
I did also, uh, it's okay to tell Mrs. Someone that she could depart after her section.
Yes, it's okay, unless, unless she wants to hang out for, uh, reports and reorganization and meetings.
You are?
Exactly.
My advice is to leave. You should worry, Miss.
Can I help you, Pat?
So any other questions for him and Dow before we.
Thank you, Susan, everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Sullivan, so sending me on my way, my, my.
You're right, yeah, you're, you're riding away until they're.
Right, Jay?
Have a ni- have a nice trip.
There you go.
Great.
And I'm not gonna see you.
We will, I'll catch up, I'll come back and say. I know, I know where you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Good luck if I don't see you. Can I go?
Um, we'll move on to agenda block B, reports from school committees, subcommittees, subcommittees and liaisons. Have any reports from subcommittees or liaisons?
One thing in this community relations week, if you remember, we, um, we were asked to provide a tour of the school for the fiftieth year reunion of the class. I gave the tour and actually behaved myself, uh, and it went very well about.
Love everything you do, Pat.
Thank you, thank you, James, sorry.
No, it's all right. Uh, we had about thirty-five returning fifty-year students, and it went very well, and they're very appreciative.
Thirty-five of them?
Thirty-five of them.
Fantastic.
And, um, they could remember what each room was used for when they were here.
I'm sure, same building, so.
Yeah, they, they asked a lot of thoughtful questions, and they're all over the country, and I actually have a copy, I'll send it in, but, um, they had done a movie in Super Eight.
Wow.
Took them a thousand hours when they were graduating, and I now have a copy of the movie.
That's.
It was about riding a bike to the school, it was very interesting.
We should, uh, see if we can get that, like, digitized and put on the website.
It's, it's on the, um, I think I got it on email, I haven't looked at it, but one of the people came with it on an iPad, it's already digital.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep, it's very interesting.
If they, if they'd allow us to, you know, put that on our, they don't link to it, that'd be.
That's right, and, um, they, they asked a bunch of questions throughout the day, and at one point we're sitting there talking, and somebody said, you know, with all the stuff in school security and everything like that, and I said, look, we have a good plan, and we practice and everything. And on that second, in comes blocking our school resource officer in uniform, because he was working the end of the course, you know, and I'm like, and this is Greg, and this is what he does. It was very pretty, anyway, it went very well, and they wanted me to share with you, they were thankful that we.
Thank you for joining.
Were able to have him as a good ambassador.
Thanks.
Other than that, that's.
All right, so we'll close off, um, reports. We do have a healthy, um, school committee governance section this time, because as I mentioned in our beginning, this is a beginning of a new session, and per tradition, uh, we reorganized the, uh, school committee, give people, uh, opportunities to do different things, and so on. Um, so for the first item, we have our school committee reorganization, there are three officer positions, I guess you will call them on our school committee, we have chair, vice chair, and secretary, currently I get by, by myself, Ms. McCollum and Mr. Carr respectively. Um, we will, this, uh, open to discuss, uh, any nominees, volunteers for those, um, positions. I will start off and say that my time commitment, uh, ability has made it such that I cannot do the chair position. Uh, I'd be willing to do a vice chair position or something else, um, or wherever you'd have me, but, uh, I would say that the chair position is open, I would recommend, uh, Ms. McCollum, he has. Chair experience and led us through, uh, through time, but happy to discuss if there's others who have thoughts or desires to do so.
I'm going to share, I agree in your recommendation, sticking up for myself, I've been secretary for two years, I'm getting along great with Kathy Bach, and if somebody's screaming to be secretary, I would be delighted to continue in this position.
Big thank you to Kathy, too.
But if somebody really wants to be secretary, please, by all means, take me out of my misery, uh, but, um, I'm, I'm glad to continue.
Okay.
We've never had less of a backlog, and it's.
I don't know if that's good or bad, but, yeah, we're good there.
So any?
Would you be, would you mind to be chair? Would that be?
I, I, I can do it, I'm picking on, so, um, I'm willing to, if that's what everyone thinks is best, I'm, I'm absolutely willing to do it, um, for at least another year, for sure.
It's like the line from Godfather III, is it just when I thought I was out, they pulled me back in.
To be clear, I don't think it's just what's best, I just don't have enough time anymore. I'm kidding.
I will not see more like that.
No, so, um, but yeah, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to switch roles if that's okay with the committee, unless someone else wants to.
Unless someone wants to be least. I think that's great, you guys, I mean, look, you guys have really done an awesome job.
Oh, go on.
I will, so, I have fifteen minutes or remarks, so let's see, where should I begin?
You might learn my name.
But honestly, I think, you know, to the extent that you guys are interested to keep doing it, we have big issues next year, the bargaining being one of them, and, uh, you know, I think. Your leadership has been very well respected, and, and we're thankful for it, so.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, so shall we just, if that, then now, do I have a motion to appoint, um, Craig McCollum as chair of the school committee for the upcoming session? Myself as, uh, vice chair for the upcoming session, and then, uh, Mr. Carr, again, as secretary for the.
Anybody want to be secretary?
Oh, that was very quick.
I was trying to be nice, because I do like it, actually, yeah, I'm doing, yeah, and can, I would be lost without.
Second the motion.
You can second that.
I'll second.
Yeah.
I'm going to second it.
I would just say, I would be lost without Kathy Bach, she has been wonderful to work with, uh, and, uh, she's been putting up with me, uh, so, glad to do it.
Great, we have a motion made and seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, so that will, uh, go into effect for the next meeting. Um, our next, there's our school committee reorganizations, school committee meeting dates, uh, we have included the materials, a calendar, uh, to set up our meeting dates, we have no more meetings of the, of the committee, um, set up, so we'll set up our annual meeting dates. What we've done in prior years is just basically all gone through and made them Wednesdays at six P M, and do it every other Wednesday with certain exceptions for holidays and, uh, and other things. Last year, we had a very successful, I think it was, uh, July with no meetings, was it, or was it August? Um, which I thought that was, I, I thought that was great, although I do, I do think we have a need, given the user fees for a meeting in, um, in, at some point in July, so. I guess, uh, I would throw out, the third is a terrible day for a school committee meeting, um, so I do not do that, so I would throw out perhaps the tenth as a, as an anchor for July. Um, and I guess we'll pause there and see what people think of the tenth for our next meeting.
I mean, nobody likes the, the summer meetings, but I, I agree, based on the last discussion we just had with the budget stuff, I mean, we're gonna have a meeting in July, so let's, I, I agree, I was thinking the tenth, I actually thought we already had a meeting scheduled for the tenth, so. That's, I, I, I think that, that's good, and then if we can keep it to one meeting in July, that'd be helpful.
I would, I would agree with that.
They gotta meet in August.
And then we probably, we have new teachers orientation starting the twenty, twenty-second, so maybe we kick off on the twenty-first? Or should we do the twenty-eighth?
Okay. Yes, and I suggest maybe, unless, earlier, is there anything we would take action on before the start of the year that the twenty-eighth would be challenging, or?
Well, I, I think the twenty-first was the other suggestion, right, so.
Do we also potentially have hires to approve at some point?
We can always do a special meeting.
A special meeting, okay.
So, uh, could, uh, so it always could be a special one, uh, to do that.
I'll just tell you, if, if, if we just make me chair, that would be my second meeting, I am on vacation that last week of August.
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Twenty-eighth.
So, I mean, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that you're completely capable, you can just, right, fall back. After a brief, a brief.
Yeah, this very nice lady in the front row has suggested the twenty-first, so.
Twenty-first? She hasn't recognized for, uh, to speak, though.
I asked, my fault.
Twenty, so we'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll do twenty-first, um, and then, and then also we can have a special meeting if we need to approve hires in the interim, so. I'd love to talk to him, though. Um, so then, it, actually, we've got, we, I think we've got some of the work done for us here, the underlying dates, I think, are the proposed school committee meetings, so let's just look at those and see if people have.
That's nice, the fourth is nice, because that's the first day of school for all students, oh, I guess not our pre-K students, but they. But K, K through twelve, though, would be the fourth, which is, it's always nice to meet in the, kind of on the first day of school.
Yep. So, four sixteen.
Sounds great. Gives you a nice chance to recap the day, you know, what happened today, and also your professional thought, that's good.
Does anyone have any concerns with these underlined proposed dates?
At this point?
Not at this point, yeah.
I mean, we, we can always move dates, and we have canceled meetings before, and we've, we can have special meetings, so, um, with that, I will, uh, see if there's a motion to approve the.
November twentieth is, it looks to me, I mean, my vision is terrible, it looks to me like it's underlined, it's a half day, and it's right before the Thanksgiving break.
Well, it's actually.
The twenty-seventh, eighth, I think, is.
Oh, yes, Thanksgiving, okay, so it's just a half day, see, terrible question.
It's P E probably.
Or conferences.
Conferences. Yeah.
Gotcha.
It's late, isn't it?
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on what department needs? Dates or issues at this point, or no?
That will, yeah, that will not be, I mean, in the prior, the prior term.
Yeah.
We just adjust that through regular school committees.
Okay.
We, we have a, uh, and we'll talk about the subcommittees in a moment, we have a, a school governance, uh, committee, which will take on a subcommittee, which will take on collective bargaining.
Okay, great.
So that will be handled, that's up to me.
Great.
I think, I suggest the dates on cover.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to approve the school committee ba- dates as reflected on agenda item H one with the addition of a, uh, meeting on the tenth of July and the twenty-first of August? Motion made by Mr. McCollum, do I have a second?
Second, second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr, you almost got there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, so, that's unanimous, approved, this is our school committee meeting date. Uh, the third and final part of the, um. Reorganization is our liaison and subcommittee assignments, we have included in the agenda, um, item H two. Uh, item H two is a list of the school committee subcommittees and the representative liaisons, and we have, currently have four subcommittees, school governance, which covers three functions, policy and standards, collective bargaining, and superintendent evaluation. We have a budget resources subcommittee, which, uh, covers finance, facilities, security, and projects and technology. We have a communications subcommittee, and then a food and service and nutrition subcommittee. So the current membership is on the thing, I'll read it to you, um, I would see if there are people interested, I personally am interested in the, um, uh, school governance, uh, also interested in budget resources, but happy to, to see that, um. To, to someone else, but I will say that I'm very interested in participating in the collective bargaining, uh, function, but, um, do other people have thoughts on roles, or?
My thoughts are that, sort of expatio, school governance, the chair should be on that committee, because it includes superintendent eval and, uh.
Yep.
So if I'm gonna be chair next, this, this coming cycle, then I, I think I should be on that.
So you're gonna kick Jen off?
I guess.
Jen, are you okay with that?
Brad.
I'll also stick with food service, but someone needs to step up with their own policy.
Tori, what do you think?
I mean, I'm happy to do food service.
Ted, are you happy to stay in budget resources?
I'm glad to.
Tori, if any of mine look good to you, you can take those and then I'm happy to jump on any of the other committees later.
I'm, I, I'm happy to fill in wherever, so I'm not, I'm being the rookie barrel.
Would you consider doing budget and resources with me that we go through the nitty gritty of stuff around here? Do you want to do it too, or are you? I'm glad to keep it. Okay, neither am I.
That makes three of us.
Mr., do you, do you want to continue doing budget resources?
I'm glad to, yes, it's important work, yeah.
What is the communications committee?
Well, we've gotten started to talk about sort of issues of communication, I'm trying to think about.
The search committee.
Search committee, it's on communication.
Yes.
So like different ways to, I mean, it's really sort of, you know.
If we have a problem.
Tells me all.
We are engaged if there's something, we have to say something.
So it's by me.
Different ways, I think, other ways to better make the website better or improve any sort of communication process that we might have to the community, to the stakeholders, you know, any new ideas, not just like the types of messaging or when to message it, I mean, it's, it's, it's really, I mean, it's fairly novel, I think, isn't it? I mean, when did, when did we form that?
Well, no, it's, we, we've always had it, it was a legacy subcommittee and it's actually clearly, I think, was doing that.
Yeah, I think she actually.
She made that before I was here, so. The idea, I like the committee, I think Ms. Lesky's or her at, and some of the outreach that we've done on superintendent search, I think we did some stuff there.
Take my spot?
I was just asking.
You're about to give it up? Yeah. It's actually.
I'm already on budget.
If she's having a security service.
Is there anyone who's feeling overworked? Like one. Make a sign up.
Well, I mean, Jen, do you want to, do you want to take my spot on food, it's a great committee, I just like, I guess now that I'm thinking of it, I'm gonna be chair in the thing, I guess I don't need to be in two subcommittees as well, although I'm like involved with everything, but I don't, it's, do you, do you want another one? I'll like give, I'll let you do food service.
I'm just happy to do it.
What's that?
I'm happy to do it. Food service is great, I love food service.
But are you, but are you looking to, that's, are you looking for like more action or are you just?
I can do, I can have more action.
Okay, well then, then take my role, take my spot in food service, you'll, it's, it's a blast, it's fun.
Only if you don't have no hesitations.
No, I'll just be, oh wait, ask me what's going on.
You may have bitten off more than you can chew with the whole dog here.
It sounds like it's two jobs, but there are two people you can ask.
Okay, so what I have so far is school governance would be Lance Dial, Craig McCollum, budget resources would be Ted Carr, Tori Hannah, communications, Ted Carr, Jen Leskey, food service and nutrition, Jen Leskey and Tori Hannah. Sound good? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the subcommittee constitutions and membership as just read?
So.
Made by Mr. Carr?
She got it.
You did, good.
Wait, you get the mode?
Yeah.
Oh, first motion?
No, it was a second, second.
Oh, second, first second.
I'm gonna keep it quiet now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, then, alright, so that is the, you know, subcommittee and liaison assignments, Dr. Sullivan, you can make sure that Jen will update this, Sereetis, update this list for us.
Yep.
The last leg of our liaison and subcommittee assignments is the representative and liaison assignments here, you can see the lists. Obviously, Mr. Keeney will be falling off of these. I'll just open this up for discussion to see if people want to move around, in all honesty, I'm fine with my personal positions, but happy to help out or give seats or whatever.
So I'd rather not be on a school council. If I can help, but I also don't want to overwhelm Ms. Hannah right up for that, so.
I was just gonna say, I'd be okay to move down to Osgood with a new principal. And we're out of Deer Hill if anyone has Deer Hillers, because I don't have any anymore.
I have a Deer Hiller in two middle schools, so I can take Deer Hill.
I like the term Deer Hiller.
So, I would love to get off the school council, I travel a lot for my work now and I the in-person during the day things are challenging for me.
Yes, I have the same thing in, in two years of being on this.
It's hard, it's hard to hit them, so if somebody wants to take my spot on high school. That'll be great.
Do, is it possible for a school committee member to do both?
Yeah.
If there's, there's no reason not to?
Sure.
I'd be happy to do Osgood in high school? Getting close to high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, the other problem is just scheduling, if they're doing them at the same time, but that's not.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll maintain my cohesive middle school success. So what we have for school councils is.
I, I, let me just, can I just, I'll just, I don't, I just don't want to like overwhelm the brand new member on these things, I'll, I'll, I'll do the Deer Hill one. Okay, initially you really want to?
I don't want, I don't want.
Are you sure?
I don't.
I just, I get nervous.
I don't know what I'm signing up for.
That's right. School councils have the main functions of school improvement plan, handbooks and budget, particularly as it relates to class.
Okay.
They're good, and they're, they're, they're really good engagement tools.
Okay.
And there's fifty-fifty representation, administration, teacher and then parent.
Okay.
I have an idea, what if it's myself and Ms. Hannah, we can split, why don't we do that? Okay? There we go, because we head to a high school.
And the other categories, I'm glad to stick with mine.
As am I. So just the ones that Paul is the only one.
So we need a wellness and safe harbor.
I can do wellness.
Okay. Any volunteers for safe harbor? And elder affairs?
I'll do safe harbor, because I, I'm kind of, I kind of go to it anyway, so.
I can do elder affairs. Because I know when the meetings are there in the evening.
There you go.
Unless somebody kills.
One, one thing I would like to think about as we take on these assignments for the next year is, you know, because I don't think we've had many of these reports over the past year, in fact, two, so question if we're, if we have the right liaisons, if there's different liaisons, I think, Mr. Carr, you were great as select board liaison, I think it was really helpful. But like, I don't recall ever getting a elder affairs readout. I know that Mr. Keeney did give us readouts on wellness and safe harbor, so those are very valuable. But, in any event, just for proof of thought.
As a new person, it would be helpful to understand for me, like, knowing like, would the expectation be to connect with, say, the chairs or the leaders of these committees for each meeting or monthly to be able to report back at least once a month? From these, like, having some sort of parameter rather than waiting for the chance encounter, like, for me, it's just helpful in terms of understanding, like, what feels like too much and what feels helpful.
Yeah, we've never really had any guidance on that.
Yeah, okay.
These, these, you know, three years, it's just kind of inherited, I don't know, Craig, do you have any, any fever history, but I think if, you know, if taking on these roles, maybe we just make more concerted effort to like at least every other month, you know, reach out and say, hey, select boards or anything, hey, wellness, just so we make sure we have it and, you know, the chair could engineer a, you know, a reporting item and say, okay, we're gonna hear from these three liaisons, it's just, instead of just a generic one, but there's, you know, it's something to think of.
It fluctuates too, right, so as the interest of the committee geared towards like, so for example, if we wanted to implement, you know, a lot of like, like a reading event at the senior center, you know, regular basis from Osgood or from something like that, then obviously the elder affairs would be a little bit more active, right? Whereas, you know, in recent years, we've cast a much brighter light on student services, so I've been very involved in CPAC, right? So it, it also fluctuate in terms of like, how, which ones of these, you're, you're hearing more to Mr. Dallas' point, you're hearing more about throughout the year, traditionally what I've done is I've reached out to them at the beginning of the year and then like periodically, like every once, like, once every like couple months to see like, you know, just let them know, hey, if you, because it's their meeting, right, we're just liaison, so it's like, is there, would you like, would you like me to, you know, come and share an update or anything like that, and then as you can, as you're able to, you go to the meetings regularly, like, I go to almost every CPAC meeting I can just because it helps me understand that realm a lot better than I would normally, but with PSO, I've reached out to some of the people in charge and just offered, you know, willing us to show up and I just never really heard from them, so that tells me that there wasn't really a huge need or demand, and so if they don't want to recruit, right?
An initial outreach plus regular follow-up to just touch base and.
I'm here, I'm willing, I'm able, you know, if, if, you know, but at the same time, I don't want to be coming to your meeting, like, imagine if someone was coming to our meeting all the time and like, we felt like we were obligated to hear them speak, but it's like.
The way CEF runs, a, a, a school committee member sitting at the CEF meeting each month would feel that way.
Exactly, that's right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I've spent a lot of time in alternative energy committee meetings.
Well.
Get out of the way there.
And then that's, that's a good thing, I think, from our conversation earlier, I think maybe engaging in the alternative energy committee a little bit more on potential options to help us reduce some of these electrical costs. You know, be it through, you know, solar investments or whatever, I think that's a, that would be a great initiative for the coming year.
I love that, and if you can keep the green team, the students, some of those conversations too, it's just a nice learning opportunity for them as well as a, you know, proactive student voice measure.
Can I just add myself as a green team liaison then, because I love that green stuff.
Do you have a great team liaison?
No, we don't.
We should.
Can we? Should we? Does that have to be?
Well.
Well, it's a student group.
It's, it's, it's a student group run by, or sort of run by some teachers, so we just have to.
They're like having a, a liaison of the Model United Nations or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we can't reach out to them and.
Well, I think, I think the key is the alternative energy. Bringing them in that way. As advisors.
So what I have so far is, here are the changes, the most changes are going to be in school councils with Ms. Leskey taking on Osgood, Ms. Hannah and Mr. McCollum taking Deer Hill, I'll maintain it middle school and Ms. Leskey also taking high school, thank you for your dedication there. Mr. Carr will take over elder affairs. And Ms. Hannah will take on wellness and Mr. McCollum will take on safe harbor. Everything else for me is the same as that.
Yep.
Okay, great, do I have a motion to reflect the, assign the representatives and the liaison assignments as mentioned? So, so moved by Mr. McCollum, do I have a second? Second, a second, second.
Second, second.
From Ms. Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright, the liaison and subcommittee assignments for twenty twenty-four five are set. Superintendent's valuation, another governance matter, so our superintendent is leaving us, but apparently we are still required to evaluate him. And we have an evaluation prepared, it's not included in the materials because I was egregiously late sending it out and soliciting comments from the committee, however, I did solicit comments from the committee. And I'm happy to orally give you your evaluation. You were proficient, your evaluation will look very similar to last year's evaluation. We, with proficiency in, in all marks, I will just read into the record the conclusion from, from the, from the evaluation. This review notes earlier on that the review is provided in summary form, given your pending departure, so as noted above, this review is provided in summary form, given Dr. Sullivan's pending departure from our district. That said, the committee unanimously and strongly believes that Dr. Sullivan has been an exemplary superintendent throughout his tenure at the Cohasid Public Schools. He has fostered a culture of continual improvement, attractive, fantastic administrative and educational staff and made this district a better place. The Cohasid Public Schools are in a better place because we have had Dr. Sullivan as a superintendent. As the representatives of our community and as a committee, we wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you, so it was a positive review, so.
Thank you.
Any comments from the committee on the, on the review, on the evaluation rather? Normally we do this later in the summer, but someone had to leave. So the time blink, there are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I don't believe we have any minutes in the.
I will get my act together.
Future agenda items, any thoughts for future agenda items coming out of this, obviously we have the user fees to discuss on a future agenda item. Any thoughts from the committee on future agenda items?
Would it be helpful to have just a basic discussion about so the community can understand what is entailed in collective bargaining? Are we allowed to do that?
Depends on what the ground rules are that we set, we have to figure out if it's gonna be closed or open, but we can, I think, generally talk and communicate the process.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can have a discussion.
You can talk about the process, just you have to understand that like, even the type of bargaining that you have is determined by the two sides.
Okay.
Whether it's.
Just maybe at some point if it makes sense.
Interest-based or traditional.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Of course.
And then, just to throw this out there, I was contemplating sending out a, I'd like to start something where at the end of each school year, we set up community improvements, areas of potential growth, things like that, from the previous year, sort of keep everyone, so it's just a sort of like a summative.
Year in review.
Uh, year in review, there you are, and I think it would be a nice thing to start doing, so what I would ask everyone, new and old, is to think about anything that comes to your mind in terms of improvements that you've seen, positive experiences, challenges, things that we're targeting, that we can sort of include in this little missive that we'll send out as a joint message to the community, the district email. Sometime, probably mid-summer, it'll go out and then it'll sort of also look forward to, you know, addressing those growth in the, in the future year, I think it'd be a nice thing to start doing. So if you guys can brainstorm and help me with that, I've already asked Dr. Sullivan to think of a few things that, you know, might come to his mind, and I'm gonna do the same, and then again, this is something that we'll all could collaborate on and come up with, I think it'd be a nice thing to do.
Great. No other future agenda items, I guess one future agenda item maybe longer term would be the alternative energy, I think that'd be something worth, worth talking about and see if there's ways to, to help cut into those utility bills. I am not aware of any reason to move into a thicker session, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can we just sit, sit here quietly for another half an hour?
I, I've done that, correct?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carr, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCollum, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the meeting is concluded, thank you very much, thank you everyone at home, and looking forward to another great year of school committee.
Great.
And thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
I thank you.